All right. Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
It is a mess.
I believe Facebook is ready, so we will begin. This is the Monday, February 13th, 2023 Select Board Meeting. First, I would like to ask the Finance Committee to open their meeting.
May I have a vice chair? Also, the Monday, February 13th, 2023 meeting for the Linkfield Finance Committee. We'll consider our meeting open as of 6:00. And would you like us to do a roll call this time? All right. Member Costin?
Present.
Member Plonka?
Present.
Member Lynch?
Present.
Member DeRosa?
Present.
And Member Daye, present. All members are present.
All right. We're going to go right to the Select Board announcements. Right now, the only one that I have, I don't know if the other selectmen have anything, but we did receive a very generous donation from the Howard W. Maxim Foundation to the Lakeville Animal Shelter of $5,000. So that's pretty nice. It says, "We are into a new year, and we want to reach out to thank you for all that you have done for the community. We would like to start this year off with a donation to your organization." Enclosed is a check for $5,000. Thank you for putting your time in and making a difference in such a positive way. Thank you, the trustees of the Howard W. Maxim Foundation. I thought that was just an incredible gift, and I just want to thank Dave Freitz for everything he does for our animals, strays, surrenders, and all the wildlife out there. So, thank you. Does either other Select Board member have any?
I'll sit there.
Okay. Next, I'm going to ask Ari to do the Town Administrator announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The town has received three awards from the National Asphalt Paving Association for the Clear Pond Road and Bedford Street Resurfacing Projects, two awards, I'm sorry. These projects took place in 2021, and the 2022 Pierce Avenue Resurfacing Project is currently under consideration for another award. Plymouth County has approved the Revised Water Sewer Project, which is envisioned to consist of water improvements to John Pond Park and Ted Williams Camp with water and septic installation at the Old Town Hall, to additional projects involving installation of restroom facilities at Old Town Hall, and the renovation of the Gamash Playground awaiting review. The project team for the water sewer project will be meeting this week to discuss next steps. Vice Chair Fabian, Brian Daye, and I attended a meeting on February 1st with administration and member jurisdictions of the Old Colony District. Superintendent and the district's bond council presented options for financing of feasibility study, estimated cost of $1 million. The district plans to apply $500,000 of its own reserves to reduce the net cost for localities. Lakeville's net shares currently estimated total around $159,000. That'll be less if the project is approved by MSBA before then it gets enrolled into the project and gets reimbursed. Town staff attended a meeting of the Historical Commission on February 2nd. We provided an overview of the Mass Historical Commission and ARPA-funded projects, and presented alternatives for the ramp installation at the Historic Library. Additionally, we discussed strategies to advance historic surveys and studies that were approved at previous town meetings. Town staff from Lakeville, Marion, Mattapoisette, Middleborough, and Rochester have engaged in extended conversation with Bristol Aggie regarding the application of the debt assessment for their new building on non-resident tuition rates. As you know, this has been a long-running dispute which focuses on the process by which a capital assessment on non-member towns is permissible. We're now looking for an in-person meeting to further discuss the issue. Moving forward on the inventory of facilities projects, procurements are underway, are nearly released, including, they include the John Pond Park Building demolition, which is currently posted in Central Register, the Gamash Playground, which is nearing completion of the draft, which I'll be sharing with the board at later date, the outdoor stage cover, which is, I believe, going to Central Register next week, the Historic Library ramp, which is under design, and the Clear Pond Park shed, which is also being processed. Vice Chair Fabian has asked staff to provide a full update on all projects on March 13th. Next meeting of the Select Board will be held on Tuesday, February 28th at 5:00 p.m. in Linkfield Police Station. Thank you.
All right. Okay, so this is a joint meeting between the Select Board and the Finance Committee because it's our budget kickoff, but I will ask the Finance Committee to do, they have a couple of agenda items of their own that they need to do, but first, I would really like to ask Chief O'Brien if he could introduce us to our new junior firefighter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Tom Bolton. He's been recently appointed to the department as a junior firefighter, and it's a significant appointment, and that COVID kind of blitzed our junior firefighter program. We had a nice partnership with Ponton High School in Old Colony, and it came to a halt during COVID for obvious reasons. And the program has paid dividends for the town. We have four active firefighters currently serving the department who started out in the junior firefighter program. Dylan Hanson, right over there, is one of those people.
Maybe him.
So it's a productive program. It's beneficial not only to our students in town, it helps them get a taste of what we do for work and perhaps a career option for them, but it also allows our firefighters to kind of almost get a sense of pride of what they're doing. They're able to share their expertise and mentor a little bit. And it used to be a really loose, not, it wasn't a well-structured program when we got here. The deputy and I and some of the lieutenants really did, we turned it into a curriculum, and so we have a very structured program, and it's an educational program, and it's really beneficial for us in the town, and hopefully it turns into more recruitment and retention benefits as well. So this is Tom Bolton. He is a junior at Old Colony. He's enrolled in the culinary program over there. He lives in town here on Racecourse. He plays lacrosse football. Obviously, he's kind of a rugged kid. He's athletic. He does some side work with his dad over there. There's his family in the back of the room. He dabbles in masonry. He's kind of a jack-of-all-trades, and as you know, fire services, we need jacks-of-all-trades. Within the next few months, we're going to get him in gear, and we're going to start training with him and bring him along. Junior firefighters do not respond to emergency calls. We keep them out of harm's way, but they do train with us, and they do come out to the station after school hours when they have free time, and we just bring them along along. I know you're a quiet kid. You don't say much, but if you want to say hello and say thank you to the board, that'd be great.
Hi, Tommy. Thank you.
So, welcome to the Lakeville Fire and the Town of Lakeville. We're really happy to have you. I really always enjoyed the night we got to meet some of the junior appointments, but like the chief said, that went away with COVID, so it's nice to see it coming back. But I've watched Tommy ride his bike around my neighborhood for, I don't know, since he started riding his bike, maybe, so it's kind of hard to believe he's as grown up. I probably sound like his parents now, but it's nice.
That hair, you might not even.
Yeah. It's nice to see the young folk, you know, stepping up like Dylan too when he did, you know, and taking their place in our community. I think it's fantastic. Great family, and really pleased to have you, so the other selectmen.
Very, very happy to have you onboard, and I look forward to seeing how you transition.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you too. So you all are free to stay for our budget. I know, you know, some of you know these budgets inside and out, and some of you may not want to see another budget again, but thanks for coming. So we'll give them a second, and then I will turn it over to you, Chairman Daye.
I'm just disappointed I thought all these people were here when the budget.
Yeah, I don't think so. All right. It's all you.
You're good?
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. So I don't have any further announcements first from what Ari said earlier. Ari covered a couple of the ones I was going to say, so thank you.
Sorry, sir.
That's okay. You have a better voice than I. So item number two was, I want to ask if the members have had an opportunity to review the meeting minutes from January 18th of this year? Yes, no?
Yes.
All right. Don't sound too excited. Did you have any corrections, or is somebody willing to make a motion to approve those minutes as is?
I'm not motioning for someone.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we've got a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from January 18th, 2023. We'll start with Larry. Member Costin?
Aye.
Member Plonka?
Aye.
Member Lynch?
Aye.
Member DeRosa?
I'm staying out with it.
Okay. Member Daye, aye. So 42001. Second one, Administrator Scott might ask for help a little bit. So we've been asked to nominate a member to participate on the feasibility study committee for the Council on Aging Expansion. Would you mind just giving us a quick hit on what that will entail?
Sure. Stick around a little bit. You have a little more on it than the packet. It's number six. No, five. The, as you recall, the history's capital plan has funding for a feasibility study on potential expansion to the senior center. The board has recently commissioned a study committee, which consists among others, a among others consists of a designation from the Finance Committee, and we'd like to have that person force me to pull the committee. Process is just getting underway. The board's going to be considering this scope of work tonight.
All right. Very good. Just a couple of quick comments. I would say is that I know, Larry, we voted you to do the fire station at our last meeting. Chris, you yourself and I are both on the Old Colony Building Committee at this time. Your term is coming to an end, so I don't know if you want to stack something else on it or not at this point.
Pass.
So I was going to suggest that you also had interest in the fire department, but would you also be interested in the Council on Aging Project?
Yeah. Are they mostly going to be night meetings, do you think, Ari?
We'll work towards the.
Or afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as I can make the work of work.
Okay. So, I mean, that was going to be my recommendation is to consider Katie because she had interest in the last one, and the rest of us are on something right now already. So. Anyone want to make a motion to nominate Katie?
I'll make a motion and nominate Katie for the feasibility committee.
Okay. Give her a second.
Thank you.
All right. Member Costin?
Aye.
Member Plonka?
Aye.
Lynch?
Aye.
DeRosa?
Aye.
I hope so. Member Daye, aye. Okay. unanimous. You got Katie.
Yay.
All right. And back to you.
Back to me. Okay. So this is our kickoff meeting of the budget, FY24 operating budget and capital plan. I do believe we all have our books now. We got them tonight, right? And I will turn it over to Town Administrator Scott.
I have a brief overview, and then Todd will give a more of a detailed tour of the document itself, which we've mentioned in the past. At the end of this, we'd like to have a quick conversation regarding the upcoming budget hearings. We have a draft schedule that we'd like to circulate to all of you, and just to see if anyone has any thoughts or concerns about what we threw out there. So we'll go through this presentation, and then we can go from there. So first, talk a little about the current environment, and there are a couple of, by the way, this is mostly identical to what I gave was included in the packet, but there were a couple of late edits that happened that I want to, that'll highlight as I go along. Nothing too substantial. The regional and national economic data is mixed. COVID-19 continues to have an impact. Unemployment is low, as we all know, and overall property valuation is continuing to rise somewhat, and global supply chain is generally improved. However, costs for rental products and services are higher than a year ago, and the Federal Reserve's continuing efforts to curb inflation by raising interest rates are having an effect on economic activity, and will definitely impact the cost of borrowing if they haven't already. State finances are somewhat uncertain. State's consensus revenue estimate puts overall revenue at 1.6% above the latest estimate for FY23, which is about 2.1% higher than the estimate utilized for the FY23 budget. So that would imply a fairly modest increase in restricted aid if the healing administration follows the approach taken by the Baker Administration. One other sort of wrinkle to this whole thing that I don't mention on here is the millionaire's tax, which is coming into effect this year. It's really unclear at this point as to how that money is going to be allocated, what's going to be allocated for, other than the statutory requirements in the special, but the legislature has a lot of range to what they can do with that money. In Lakeville specifically, we've maintained a pattern of sustained and strong growth despite some of these headwinds. FY23 new growth totaled $540,000, and the town recorded 468 building permits, which was down, but still historically high. December 22, unemployment was 3.1%, and median residential sales prices were up 10.7% over 2021, which is a pretty solid increase. For the budget process itself, we really were trying to do a sort of a basic budget without a whole lot of fluff. The primary objectives were to ensure that the proposed budget and the capital plan met the statutory obligations, and provides state goals with sufficient opportunity to address areas of concern. Our core principles were to focus on near and long-term sustainability, maintain current levels of service, and ensure that Lakeville remains a workplace of choice, which the board made a lot of progress on over the past year or two. The proposed budget and capital plan accomplishes these objectives through a very conservative approach. Our objective was to emphasize proper funding for existing services and refrain from proposing significant new initiatives. There's really not much new stuff in this budget. So a look at revenue assumptions. Property tax level is in there, 2.5% growth. We have new growth estimated $350,000, which is the number that's recommended by the Board of Assessors. FY23 was $540,000, so that's a decline, and probably still reflective of the decline in building permits that we see that was on 22. We tried to go conservative for local receipts. The estimate is $4,064,000. That's still almost over $600,000 below the 22 actual. State aid is estimated at $1.9 million, pending the recent state budget. That's a 2.4% increase. That could change a little bit depending on how it goes. Remember, that's all state aid, including school funding, which is one of the wrinkles that we're dealing with. The Park Enterprise Fund revenue is estimated $210,000, which is a bit higher than FY23 budget. Some of that is retained earnings, but overall it is an increase. The Landfill Enterprise Fund is estimated at $445,000. The F is lower than the FY23 budget of $458,000. We're also looking at, we also have a requirement to note at least the Reserves for Community Preservation Act. The, I understand at this point that the CPC is not making recommendations for the Springtown Meeting, so we're going to be assembling base budget reserves, and that'll be what we put forward for the Springtown Meeting. The FY24 operating budget totals $35.3 million. General fund is the largest component, $34.6 million. We use, as I said, conservative estimates for state aid and local receipts, along with the prop 2.5 increase. Proposed budget includes no cannabis revenue. That's necessary because HCM payments are currently being withheld by our current vendors, and they are the subject of, that is accepted of current and potential litigation. The proposed budget ensures that adequate resources were provided to maintain services, but refrain from funding significant new initiatives. Funding to meet increased costs due to inflationary increases, including utilities expenses and maintenance agreements is in the budget, as well as implementation of the collective bargaining agreements for union personnel, and funding for wage increases for non-union employees, as well as a placeholder for the one union that's not settled at this point. So there, you know, compared to last year, there's really not much in here in terms of additions. We have funding to support the collective bargaining agreements, a night differential pay increase for dispatches in the police department to provide, deal with some staffing issues we've had there, overtime expenses in the fire department, increases in employee healthcare costs and general insurance. Employee health goes up by about 6%. We think that's pretty safe. The Gateway is actually recording a lower number right now, which, so we have a little extra there, and general insurance up by 6%. The placeholders for the school districts budget, which I'll talk about in a minute. Overall, this chart here shows you how modesty increases are. General government's up by 2.09%. Public safety's up by 5.1%. It's the only one that's really above, is a larger number. Education, 3.22%. Public works, 2.91%. Human services, 1.63%, and cultural recreation, 2.23%. When we get into the detail, you'll see that there's really not, we've kept the increases as low, as tight as possible. Talking about education funding, the timeline for the school district budgets is complicated by the delays in the state budget process. As you know, the governor will not submit the proposed budget until March 1st, so when we come back for our budget hearings, we'll hold for some updates on what's proposed. We've been informed by Freetown Lakeville as of last week with our meeting with the Joint Finance Committee, that they will be approving their budget sometime in, I would have said, in late March, right? Was it March or April? April. So the best we can do is include placeholders at this point. Freetown Lakeville, we have a placeholder, a $547,000 increase, which is 3.9% increase. Old Colony, $109,000, about 4.4% increase. Initial estimates for both of those are higher, but we've had a number of conversations with both of them, emphasizing the need to keep these numbers down to the 3% range, and hopefully they'll be listening to that. Also, the numbers that they provided at this point don't include any changes to state funding, which will automatically reduce the number. Funding is also included for the non-resident tuition assessments, Bristol Agricultural High School tuition. We have tuition there, and we do have a placeholder for capital, current capital at least. That capital assessment, as I mentioned earlier in my announcements, for non-member jurisdictions is currently in dispute. We also have, for the first time, Norfolk Agricultural High School tuition. We have one student going there now, so there's that cost as well. And then there'll be, there's really going to need to be additional discussion to arrive at FY24 budgets that the town can accommodate, so I anticipate a lot more discussion in March. A look at free cash is one of the changes we had made here. There was an error that we had on the capital projects for the Fall '22 Town Meeting, that the number was in really what was proposed, but not what was approved. As you recall, one project didn't go through. So between the FY24 capital plan, first payment on the ladder truck, complying with general stabilization and OPEB, and the OPEB trust policy, we have total proposed allocations of $1.7 million, which is still close to $40,000 below the total free cash. That's a pretty safe place to be. The FY24 to '28 capital plan, we have some significant projects on here. One thing I don't have on this list, but it's mentioned in bullet form, is the fire station project, and that's because those are placeholders. We're not quite sure where they're heading. The library roof replacement in '25, senior center addition, a number of roadway improvements, police cruisers, ambulance replacements, fire engine replacement in 2027, public works vehicles throughout the course of the period, we'll be talking about that some, and the DPW yard improvements, as well as the park projects. The five-year planning period this time is '24 to '28. It's really a combination of borrowing, free cash, retained earnings, capital stabilization, overlay surplus, as has been in the past. We actually had, spoke with the Board of Assessors, and they agreed to release a portion of surplus to help support the capital plan in '24. The largest placeholder project, of course, is that placeholder for the designing construction of the town fire station. There's $16 million in '24 to '25. The town's overall debt service budget declined by $240,000 from FY2023, including a $228,000 reduction in debt service supported within the levy limit, so that was helpful during '23. The Fall '22 Town Meeting improved an article funding the replacement of windows and doors at Asquith Elementary School. That's the MSBA project that's about to get underway. Maximum total budget is $4.2 million, although the town's share is substantially less. It will be financed by a combination of grant funding from MSBA and a debt issue that will be accommodated within the town's levy limit. Debt service within the levy limit will increase in FY24 due principally to that project. This is a look at '24, the capital plan, and we'll be diving into this more as this process goes on. There are two projects that are proposed for the fall, which are the Select Boards, I'm sorry, the fire station project, assuming we get to design and we're able to get there, for the Fall '20 '23 Town Meeting. There's also a fall project here designated for the Peach Barn, furtherization stabilization. We have some initial ideas from facilities, but we want a little more time to put that together, but that will be the first time that we have some good funding going towards renovation of that building beyond the roof, which was a few years ago. The security improvements are funded by, which is a completion of a security project that's been underway for a couple of years. That will be funded by the overlay surplus that I mentioned earlier, and then a number of other items, cruisers, ladder truck, so thermal engine project, pump operations equipment for the fire department, roadway improvements, a center replacement, storage shed, and a pickup truck, and then in addition to the senior center, which was for design, as well in the FY24 capital plan, as well as skate park improvements at Ted Williams, as requested by the Parks Commission. This is a look at '24 to '28. I won't go into that too much, but you can see the big project being the borrowing in '25, which was most entirely due to the fire station project. Talk a little bit about COVID relief, because that is one of our sources of funding. It's not in the operating budget, but it's something that is available. Initial relief is provided through the CARES Act, as we all know. Town received and spent $1.5 million in eligible activities, supplies mitigation for town responders and staff, as well as for support to the regional school district. ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act, provides additional funding to facilitate recovery and invest in certain types of infrastructure. Received funding from two sources, $1.2 million divided between FY21 and '23, '22, as well as passed to from Plymouth County. We have $686,000 in pending applications with the county right now. However, that does not include $300,000, which was just approved, so that should have been listed as approved for the water sewer project. COVID funding must, ARPA funding must be spent by December 2024. Activities to date include initial allocation of the town's own money for $100,000 for COVID vaccine mitigation. That has fortunately not been really touched in any great way at this point. Restoration of the tennis courts at Ted Williams Camp, which was approved by the Select Board, for $44,000. The Gamash Playground restoration, which is, you're not seeing double. We funded it in the, the board funded it in our own ARPA funding, but also authorized the application to Plymouth County. If that Plymouth County, if that Plymouth County project is approved, then that'll free up the $170,000 here. And then installation of stage cover for the, for the outdoor stage, that's $20,000 of a larger project. And finally, feasibility study to advance provision of water services to town facilities and parks, $14,800, which was what started the water sewer project. Talk for a minute about next steps. We have our presentation tonight. March 2nd, the Capital expenditures committee meets. We have department reviews given for March 6th, 8th, and 16th, which I hopefully will be with the Finance Committee as well. In mid-March, the education budgets will be approved by Freetown Lakeville and Old Colony School committees. March 13th, the town meeting warrant closes. April 10th, the board will vote on, the sub-board will vote on the final warrant. Warrant review on April 24th, and then the town meeting on May 8th. And with that, Madam Chair, that's been the presentation. We'll be happy to take questions, or if you want to have Todd give his overview.
I say we go with Todd.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to just sort of continue with what Ari has shared with you, and walk you through a little bit of the binder that you've been handed this evening. So with respect to our recommended budget for FY24, starting on page 6 of in your binders, this is a high-level, what I call, sources and uses of funds summary, and we show you the prior two years' final budgets, this year's budget to date, and initially what's being proposed for FY24. The top two-thirds really represent sources of funds and uses of funds that do not require town meeting action, leaving us with a net available for appropriation that we use to look at operating budgets and capital. And so in terms of sources of funds, as Ari said, we're looking at using the statutory 2.5% allowable, which yields about $678,000 of new tax, property tax revenue. New growth or new property tax revenue for new construction and improvements of $350,000, which is, as Ari pointed out, substantially less than what we've enjoyed the last three or four fiscal years, and this is what the Board of Assessors is comfortable at this point in. is what the Board of Assessors is comfortable at this point in suggesting is an attainable number. It really is going to depend on how the spring season goes in terms of building and development. We certainly have had a lot of permit activity, but as you know, a lot of the activity has slowed for a variety of reasons. We have existing debt exclusions, which, where the voters have agreed to authorize increased taxes just to pay principal and interest for specific projects, and this is primarily now the police station. We also have the public library, final payment on the library next year, so that will be coming off. And we do still have one regional school. We did have two regional school borrowings. We still have one that I believe matures in FY26. So those numbers will be declining over the next couple of years by about a quarter of a million dollars, and only could be replaced if the voters opt to approve new projects. We did have also, point out, we did have some unused levy from '23, which resulted in state aid coming in higher than expected and a bit of a delay that we had with respect to the Asquamsted Elementary School window project, which was a town-approved project inside the levy limit, which, as you know, the cost of the project did grow over the last year. It's a shared with the Mass School Building Authority. It's in excess of $4 million gross project cost. So we have utilized that unused levy in '24 to offset the increase that you'll see in the debt budget associated with the window and door replacement project at the elementary school. State aid, as Ari mentioned, doesn't represent a large portion of our budget. We've got, we're projecting about, just about a $45,000 increase, and I think it was, it's about 2.4%. Typically, at this point, we've got a better number by the end of January, but as Ari mentioned, we have a new governor, and therefore, when there's a new governor, the new governor's allotted additional time before submitting a budget, so March 2nd is our target. Certainly, this has a huge impact for our school districts, who are highly dependent on Chapter 70 education aid. So the numbers they've given us initially really are sort of the worst-case low-balling state aid estimates that they could provide. So that will play out through the month of March in all likelihood. Local receipts, we've typically had, enjoyed pretty good increases here. We've tempered the estimate for '24 with respect to cannabis fees, as Ari mentioned, with respect to building permits, because the activity has slowed, and also rentals. So we had a communications tower rental, 40 or 50,000 a year, and there's recently been a newer lease that is going to yield an upfront rental payment one time, which, so, through which we'll see a one-time large increase to certified free cash next year. It's okay that I said that right. So all in all, property tax, we're looking at an increase of about 3.8%, 2.5% for statutory, about 1.3% for new growth. The change in debt exclusions and unused levy, just about nets out. So it's about 3.8%, which is a bit less than we've enjoyed in recent years. The state aid is still in flux a bit. Local receipts, we're monitoring, but as Ari said, we're still using a number that's about $600,000 below our FY22 actuals. In addition to those, so those are sort of the three main funding sources. We use recurring sources to support our operating budget. In addition, there are other sources that you'll see listed, the use of free cash, our stabilization and debt stabilization funds, other sources which, in our case, really represents the use of the septic loan program to offset septic loan-related debt in our debt budget. Ari mentioned the assessors last week released a modest amount of overlay to surplus, which we're asking to support one of the capital items in the '24 capital plan. And depending on what comes out of the capital efforts, which begin March 2nd, it's possible that other borrowing may impact us, although in all likelihood, as Ari said, we're looking at possibly something in the fall, and then FY25 for major borrowing consideration. So any approvals during '24 would likely yield a first debt payment in '25, so no impact next year. Our uses of funds outside of the budget also include state and county assessments. We've estimated a 2.5% increase in those charges, which do not go through Town Meeting. They're just added as part of the tax rate setting process. And again, as the state budget becomes more clear, those assessments and charges will shake out and true-up. We also have a $250,000 provision for abatements and statutory exemptions that the Board of Assessors oversee, and this represents less than 1% of the overall tax levy. So it's a very modest, and it shows good management on a part of assessing. In fact, over the years, I think the highest it's been here in the last 10 years is only about 1.3% of the levy. Right now, we're just proposing to utilize free cash to cover non-recurring items, so funding for a portion of the capital plan, and transfers to a couple of our reserves, the stabilization fund and the other post-employment benefits fund, and no use of free cash for the operating budget. There are also two, you'll notice, two proposed subsidies for our two enterprise funds. The Park Enterprise Fund this year had a $17,500 subsidy, and that had to do with limiting the beach facilities to residents only. You'll recall the discussions we had last year. The Park Commission is advocating a similar approach for the coming season, and has asked that we level fund that subsidy at 17.5. The Solid Waste or Transfer Station Enterprise Fund, we've historically subsidized around $100,000 a year. We're looking at a slight increase this year, which relates to funding and adding into their budget the annual Household Hazardous Waste Day, which had, in the prior several years, had been funded from an article, a one-time article that had been appropriated, that we've been working off year to year. So that's about $7,500, the annual Household Hazardous Waste Day. So with respect to the operating budgets, that leaves, based on our plan, about $34.6 million for operating budgets. Just to summarize a few things that Ari may have already touched on. With respect to salaries, we have, most of, all but one collective bargaining agreement is settled, which begins July 1st, and I believe they're all three-year agreements. And the one that's unsettled, we'll point out to you during our meetings in March, we have put a, set aside or a provision for potentially funding the one that's not settled at this time. The non-union cost of living that's built into the budget is, for non-union personnel, is 3%. We have one modest position reclassification in the entire, across the entire town government. No planned retirements that we're aware of at this time, because very often that results in some savings. Would remind you that we will be fully funding the new facilities manager position, which was approved at the Fall Town Meeting, and only funded for the balance of this year at $50,000, so there's about another $30,000 add to the salaries area in facilities. And in terms of additional cost in personnel, it's really, we've got a possible promotion of a detective position to sergeant in the police department, adding in a night differential for the dispatchers, both of which are less than $10,000 each, and we've added a modest $10,000 to the fire department's emergency overtime line, which has been a real challenge in recent years. Not sure that's going to be adequate, but it's really all we could support, given the sources available. With respect to the operating expenses, just a few things to highlight. Our annual financial audit, we will not have any actuarial expense next year. We fund that every other year. However, because of the COVID money that Ari mentioned earlier, the ARPA funds, we are subject to an additional federal single audit, which is about a $5,000 increase to the annual financial audit costs. In the HR office, this year, you'll recall, we have $25,000 approved for a compensation classification study that will not recur next year, so you'll see a $25,000 reduction in HR expenses. Both technology and facilities have really been shored up now, under Ari's leadership the last couple of years, to a real stable level, so you'll be pleased to see that there are very, facilities is essentially level-funded, other than the director's salary, and technology is up very, very modest amount. In terms of added costs, we've really just added fuel costs for both the police department and the Council on Aging for their van drivers. With respect to the snow and ice budget, we're recommending at this time level funding. This budget is still significantly below our five-year actual costs, by about $51,000. Fortunately, this year, we're doing great, and let's hope that continues. But when there's an opportunity, we would like to look at bringing that budget up a little bit at some point. Ari mentioned employee benefits. The Plymouth County retirement system had an updated actuarial valuation done, and we were initially hit with a, close to a quarter of a million-dollar increase in our assessment. All the member communities worked with the county, and they were able to smooth out that assessment over the, over a two-year period, over both '24 and '25. So we're looking at an increase of about $123,000 for our pension assessment for Plymouth County. Health insurance rates, as Ari mentioned, we have 6% budgeted. You'll notice that the actual budget is not up much at all for group insurance, but that's just a function of the subscribers and the current experience. With respect to general insurance and workers' compensation, we've been advised to hold a 6% adjustment, which we've built into the budget, and hopefully, as we get closer to Town Meeting, we can firm up those numbers with our agent. Debt service, we've got the police station, which I mentioned, the library, one more payment, and that's an excluded debt coming off. Route 79 is still ongoing. The Board of Health is considering asking Town Meeting to authorize additional funding for Title V septic loan improvements for homeowners, and that would be fully paid through repayments by the homeowners, no tax impact. And as I mentioned, we're just beginning the construction phase of the window project at the elementary school. That'll start in June, and so we'll be doing temporary borrowings next year and working with MSBA on our reimbursements. And so you're going to start to see the impact of, at least the interest costs associated with that project next year. And any other new debt that might be authorized, at least in the short term, is fairly challenging within our levy limit. Certainly, the fire station, if that were to move forward, would require some voter approval beyond Town Meeting. Ari already showed you an exhibit with the percentage increases by functional area, so I won't spend much time on that. When you do look at the two regional school district budgets, the increases in the paperwork look smaller, but their actual assessments this year came in less than what we budgeted, and we can, we'll provide more detail as we go through the process in March with you. The two enterprise funds, as I mentioned, the two proposed subsidies, the Park Department is proposing to use $15,000 of their retained earnings for unforeseen items that might come up during the year. This year, we budgeted $20,000 for that purpose, and they also have one capital item for $25,000, which we're going to use retained earnings to fund. So their retained earnings was certified just over $40,000, so with those two uses, we would come out of Town Meeting with not much, but they're having a much better performance year this year. Things have turned around now that we're sort of coming out of COVID. They really struggled for a couple of years with the, during the pandemic. The Solid Waste Enterprise has no capital, and they do have a large item, you'll notice, in FY25, where they're proposing to replace a roll-off truck for about $200,000. So their current retained earnings, we're trying to preserve so that when we get to FY25, as much of that truck can be paid through retained earnings, as opposed to any sort of tax or free cash subsidy. Ari gave you a good sense of the $2.08 million capital plan for FY24. About a million and a quarter of that relates to secure, facilities, excuse me, including security improvements, the million dollars potentially for design of a fire station, shed for the highway DPW, continuing on the senior center addition project, and the skate park improvements at the park. We also still have in the wing, waiting in the wings, sort of unspecified the addition to the public works facility. So that may, that's, you know, we've got a placeholder, but we're not sure how that's going to play out yet. Number of vehicles and equipment next year, as Ari mentioned, a couple of police cruisers, some thermal imaging equipment for the fire department, and updated valves and pump operations for some of their apparatus. And the first year, a first payment, excuse me, of the multi-year lease purchase of the ladder truck approved by Town Meeting last May, and $375,000 for roadway improvements to continue on that. With respect to our reserves, we're continuing to follow the actuary's recommendation to fund, add $310,000 to the trust that currently has a It currently has a balance of just under $2.2 million. I didn't bring the current valuation with us, but it's, with me, but it's at least $15 million. I forget the exact number, but I'll get that for you. We're looking to keep pace with the Select Board's policy with regard to the stabilization fund. So we'd be advocating to add $250,000 of free cash into that fund. It currently has a balance of $1.745 million. And if you'll recall, this year, we actually funded $700,000 to get caught up because it had been sort of neglected for a couple of years for other needs that we had. We also have a debt and capital stabilization fund, which has $1.38 million currently in it. And again, we've, you know, we're watching that in terms of some of these larger facility projects that are on the horizon in the next few years. Things like the library roof and possibly the fire station project. I mentioned park retained earnings. We're looking to basically use that this year for their budget and capital needs. The solid waste retained earnings is certified currently at $165,000. And that truck the following year has an estimated cost of $200,000. So we've got that within reach in terms of our plan. And as Ari pointed out, with respect to our free cash, if everything recommended was approved and moved forward, we're looking at close to $400,000 of unused free cash after Town Meeting as a base to roll forward for FY '24 and '25. We also have new this year, the community preservation program. As you recall, the Fall Town Meeting funded some admin costs and set aside an initial estimate for the reserves we're required to do statutorily for open space, affordable housing, and historic preservation. At the end of this year, I will true up those three reserves based on what's actually collected. We went into Town Meeting with a conservative estimate of $175,000. The Board of Assessors has committed close to $225,000 this year. But again, it'll be based on what's collected as of June 30th. And in future years, we'll also be looking at some state match funding. It's not available to us in the first year of the program. And it's still early to get an estimate. But based on the fact that real estate activity has slowed a bit, and a couple of large cities have joined the program, we've been advised to be conservative on how we approach our estimate for the state match in terms of the overall CPC budget. And as Ari said, right now, we think for the annual, we'll just be doing much like we did in the fall, asking for some modest admin fees and setting the three reserves aside. And any projects for the town to consider, the CPC will be looking to present at the Fall Special Town Meeting, prior to setting the tax rate.
That's it?
I think that's enough.
That's enough?
I'm getting hoarse.
I feel like I should have flopped.
So, but certainly Ari and I will address any questions, yeah.
I was going to ask for questions. We have the schedule for the budget meetings.
We can pass out the schedule, and then we'll just ask for all questions at one time, if that's good for everybody.
So the dates are March 6th, 8th, and 16th. We have mostly mirrored what we did in the past, a couple of special questions, a few stakeholders, Parks Commission, Mr. Holmes after the 16th, that kind of thing. But, you know, we will be, just wanted to run this by everybody, and if everyone's comfortable with it, then we'll go ahead and formally schedule with the departments.
Okay, so I know everyone has to check their calendar, but I know the Select Board's had these dates for a little bit. So does anyone have questions on the schedule first?
Anyone?
Yep.
The 6th. Is it possible that we can have a remote availability for that? I won't be here, I'll be in Georgia.
Yeah, probably, we can ask Jose, and probably.
Sure, we won't get too much trouble doing on vacation, but I'll do what I can.
This could ground you a little.
This place is going to be grounded than Georgia.
All right, anyone else have questions on the lineup, of which groups are meeting on what days? We do have fire and police in the same night, as long as we're working on, you know.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
I don't have a problem with the dates, that's fine. But I think the schedule of 15 minutes to review some of these budgets is really tight.
Pretty much use the same structure as last year, to the time. If you want more time, we can stretch them out. We're just trying to get them to those three nights. It's entirely your call.
Yeah, I always worry about running out of time, too. I think last year, we did pretty good. I thought we did, but.
There's no pumping at 8 o'clock, I mean, things shut down.
Right, that's my question. I don't even think we ran over too much last year. I actually thought it was pretty, so we definitely can go over, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And these aren't going to get posted this way, correct?
No, this is for internal use.
Yeah, it's for internal use.
We'll have the, we'll have the, the agenda will have these departments listed.
Yeah.
It won't get time certain.
Yeah, but they won't be time certain. This is just, I think, to give the department heads some.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so. Where would you like to start with budget questions, Ari?
We're an open book, Madam Chair.
Okay.
We'll have more time to get into this in more detail later on, so if people need more time, we'll respond to.
So there's, you know, we have the line by line. I don't necessarily know that I want to get into questions line by line, but I think we should take this opportunity to ask, you know, general questions if anyone has them. But also, you know, if you have a question you don't even want to ask it tonight, because, you know, you can always reach out to Ari, I'm sure.
And Todd.
And, yeah, and Todd. You know, Christine has worked on the budget a lot, so, you know. So, who wants to go first? Does anyone have questions, Finance Committee?
I'm trying to, Ari or Todd. The education budget numbers, that's, I know, from what I understand, still a wild number at this point.
So the only numbers we have for the school districts at this point are estimates of what would happen to the assessment based on kind of their wish list, combined with no increase in state aid. So the absolute worst case scenario is what they've given us so far.
Oh, this number is a very, this is the worst case scenario?
No, this is much less than the worst case scenario.
Much, much less.
In the case of Old Colony, about $40,000 less. In the case of Freetown-Lakeville, several hundred thousand.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I, we had a meeting of the joint committee last week, as Refinance Committee, and I think everybody, including Freetown and Lakeville, both expressed a strong need to get this number under control that they're showing us. And they, you know, again, the number they gave us had no increase in state aid. It was supposed to be minimum aid anyway, but there will be some increase in state aid. And so that's probably worth $100,000 differential right there. And then the implied, I'd say, and Rich and Leah were part of this as well, they implied that there's some room for adjustment that they could be working on.
But the bottom line is, is that they're asking for a $985,000 increase between Freetown and Lakeville. No way either, now, being close to supporting that, so.
In the preliminary budget, they look for that much more.
Correct. And the Finance Committee have the budgets, I believe, major?
We have a, we've got a limited number of sets. I have a set here, it actually has Brian's name on it.
They gave copies for everybody last year.
We can get the electronic ones, zip it off. Their number is what, like a 5.3% increase or something like that?
Yeah, I told them it's got to get more than three, it's the three.
Unfortunately, you know, our regional school districts don't get big increases in state aid. I mean, last year, we got $60 a student, which was at $180,000. I mean, you know, it's not a lot of money, you know, and I, we'll be lucky to get that. So it's a big, big problem.
Yeah, it's a challenge, I'll see how that comes down. I think, you know, we're somewhat, it's unfortunate, well, so we changed the budget calendar this year to accommodate, hopefully, what we thought was going to be, we thought we'd have a better chance of accommodating a situation where we had initial state numbers. After this budget calendar was adopted, it was announced that the governor's budget wouldn't be proposed until March 1st. So unfortunately, we struck out on that one, hopefully maybe next year. However, we, the, we're going to be kind of scrambling in April a bit because of the Town Meeting date, to get this done. So, you know, just be advised, it's going to have some, going to have some decisions fairly fast, I think, during, especially in April, getting ready for Town Meeting, simply because of the timeline of the state budget. And hence the schools budgets.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
We haven't got any information from Old Colony, so.
Just a very, they sent us, they sent me a two-page thumbnail of what it would look like, you know, with no increase. It wasn't really, it was very substantial information.
But they must have a detailed budget like this one?
No, no.
Not yet.
They should.
Not yet. They're not proposing, the superintendent's proposing his budget until after the state budget comes out.
They're not going to start their budget until after March 1st?
They're not going to propose a budget. I'm sure he's working on his budget, but they're not going to propose a budget until March.
Oh, that's a problem.
It's one of the reasons why we suggested a later Town Meeting date, but, yeah.
So I'd like to add that from that meeting, Freetown was very upset with, they seemed to be, you know, quite outspoken, both the town administrator and the chair of their Select Board, Sleppmann, on the numbers. And there was a couple of things that also came to light. They do, Freetown-Lakeville has school choice, but it looks, when you look at the numbers, it looks like school choice is in the deficit. So the questions were asked, why are we doing school choice? Now, part of school choice is teachers that work for the district can bring their kids, and that could be a great benefit if we're trying to attract really good teachers. So I mean, I can see that, but we did ask them to really take a look at their numbers on that, because if it doesn't make financial sense, then, you know. The other thing, too, was they said that the preschool program, I guess, has, I hate to use the word, you know, erupted, but I guess they're opening it up for, like, the first time for a lot more students. So, and most of it is need-based, but because it's, you have to have seven model students for five special needs, so they, I believe, need to hire at least one or two teachers. So there's a huge increase right there in hiring two teachers for, even though the model students pay a tuition, they're still not paying, you know, what a teacher costs. So, so anyway, so we identified a couple of places, and I think they know that, and they didn't disagree with us that, that they need to look at their numbers, but, yes.
This might not be a good question for tonight, but on the school choice, the number in my head was, we were basically in the deficit, like $15,000 per student. Is that, do you know if that's something they could work into teachers' contracts instead to limit it to some degree? Or is it a?
Yeah, I don't know. I know, I don't remember what negotiation they bargained, I thought that was bargained for, for the teachers. But there's still, I think now there's 60 kids.
66 was the number.
Yeah. And I never remember us having, our kids have graduated within the last 10 years. I don't remember it being that many kids when our kids were there 10 years ago. So it was really limited. Yeah. How they identify the school choice, depending on what school, how many students per school. Yeah, so. Rich?
Just to follow Brian's question. It's, there's a read-to on the contract that that be allowed, that the teachers can bring their students to the region at no cost, you know, to anybody. That includes the elementary school, you know, well, so they're not really treated as school choice kids? Okay, they're treated as students, you know, within the district. So on the school choice side, they don't have school choice. I think they said K through 3, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think they've done away with that.
And then they limit the number of students per grade, okay? Most of the ones that are allowed are at the high school level, okay? I don't remember the numbers they said, but, you know, they do try to limit that. But, you know, the school, school choice, and we get 5,000 a student, I think, if that. So it's costing us between, depending upon the grade level, it's costing us $12,000 to $14,000 a student to educate the students, so. It's not a, you know, I don't want to say it's not a moneymaker, but it's a whole thing to say.
It's not even a cover it.
It sounds like if that's already negotiated in the contract, then adding school choice is just a.
Well, I mean, yeah, well, the reason why you want to add school choice is because you're adding diversity to the school. I know we picked up some really great athletes at the school that came from other districts. We have kids that leave the school, too. So I think the whole question, and this is what, you know, we asked, and I, you know, followed up and said that we really need to see, how many do we send out? How many come here? And look at the whole, you know, but that's also what I'd like the school committee to do. That's really their, you know, their purview. But if each kid has a deficit of $10,000, then, you know.
Madam Chair, they just voted to continue school choice.
Yeah, they vote that every year, I think it is.
And it's required, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so. Anyway, so that's one thing that we definitely asked them to look at. And, you know, I, if kids want to come here, I'd like them to, but, you know, it has to make financial sense, too. We can't be, you know, taking money away from Lakeville kids and Freetown kids, so.
And programs.
And programs, yeah, yep. So anyways, so yes, we, at that meeting, we all, you know, asking all those questions. All right, okay, any other questions next?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First of all, you can see that the new growth number has gone down by almost $200,000. It's no surprise, you know, because building permits have dived, okay? I mean, big time dive. I know that Todd said, oh, we made our numbers, you know, but, you know, this year will barely make the budgeted number, never mind going over, you know, compared to the last, you know, two years. So that, that definitely is a problem. Do we know if the Board of Assessors have, how much we've brought in? How much they're anticipating here we are right now?
Well, I can ask them.
Because I'm concerned we might not make that number either. There's a lot, a lot out there. I mean, all the big projects, you know, the 40B project, the T Station is 100% done. You know, the one over at Island Terrace, you know, is done. The LaBaron, the, most of the new units are already completed. They're doing some additional stuff, but not significant. So, and we have no commercial development. You know, the only commercial development we have is the storage facility. There's a small office space or whatever, but, so I'd be concerned about that. You know, that we need to address that. And I know it's dived, I know it's taken a significant reduction, which was anticipated that was going to happen, anyway. The second question having to do with the local receipts, and in looking at, you know, the local receipts, I think that it's important that, and it's, you know, everyone doesn't like to talk about it, but the facts are, the marijuana business is not helping us at all. They have, and one company hasn't. They haven't, one company hasn't paid a dime since last July 1st, all right? Everybody, the previous board said, oh, we're gonna make hundreds of thousands of dollars on the, the, uh, the marijuana business. It has not happened, and we have one of the, one of the marijuana companies suing the town because they don't want to pay their fees, and they haven't paid their fees, so right now, the two active, uh, marijuana businesses are paying zero, zero, including this year, never mind next year.
And can you clarify why that is, Richard? I understand one...
Uh, they decided they didn't wanna pay it because of the new marijuana law, one of them decided to sue us because they didn't like it.
So the state legislatures back in the spring voted to do away with the, um, community impact fees, so a lot of the marijuana, and it's not just here, you know, there's other companies in the state are just choosing not to make payments that are, you know, agreed to in host community agreements, so, um, we've had, I don't know how many meetings on, you know, the...
You've seen a lot of meetings in executive session, honestly, or not?
Yeah, a lawsuit, yeah. So, and we're trying to, honestly, we're trying to navigate it because it's, it affects us a lot, because we have six host community increments, you know, or at least six companies, so, um, you know, we've, we've asked council to, you know, try to just get us as much information as we possibly can with our marijuana partners, but we feel it's not a good practice right now to add any money into the revenue side of...
Well, if it wasn't last year's budget, aren't they budgeting it right now?
Yeah.
Okay, we're talking at least $300,000 here, at least, maybe more, that we should've gotten, and anticipate to get...
Yep.
The following year.
And... Yeah, well...
This is a major problem.
Right, and it's not just a problem for us, though, and, and I think everyone remembers that when it was on the ballot, the state said, marijuana companies said, this is where you're gonna get your money to build your schools and buy your fire engines and build your, you know, buildings, town buildings. We're using zero for projected revenue, because we can't count on it right now, and there really isn't a firm, you know, we're not getting what we need from the state legislature either. All they've done is basically say, you know, we're gonna do away with impact fees and, and that's it.
We don't charge the impact fees.
Right, we don't charge the impact fees.
We don't say not impact fees, our, our fees are based upon community benefit fees, there's a difference between the two.
Yep.
Okay, in our opinion, our opinion, our contracts are legit, the other towns are charging impact fees.
Impact fees.
We are not doing that, which is a big difference, so...
So, not only is there the standing problem, then, when the renewal process comes up, it's gonna be a whole other discussion that has to take place.
Well, it so happens that we were one of the first towns to, uh, to do it, you know, the previous board did it in 2017, we got one coming up in June, and we got one coming up in August, so it's gonna be interesting, gonna decide whether you wanna renew them at all.
Right.
Because one of them that we have is a major problem right now, uh, in the industrial park, major problem. So anyways, I just, everybody needs to understand the facts here.
You know...
You know, I think it's, I'm sorry to say that.
Yeah, no, no, but I've been, I, you know, people stop me in the supermarket, and they're like, well, you know, what about this? And I'm, I'm like, this is my hands, like this, like, I don't, I can't put money in the budget, can't ask the town administrator to count on money that we know we're not getting, so...
I have a pretty simple in the last week, say, where's all the marijuana money? We were told...
Here it is, it's in your pocket.
Yeah. Um, so, and you know what? If, if all of a sudden that changes for us, then, you know, then great, and that'll be a bonus, but right now, we can't count on it.
And last year's budget, did that include in the local receipts line item?
Yes.
Yeah.
You can see it on, um...
It's on page seven in the binder.
Yep, yeah, sure.
So we do label it as impact, you know?
With budget of 175, we can have its impact fees?
It's not impact fees, it's definitely... Oh, okay.
But the, the good news is, we never used that money for the operating budget. You know, the last three years, we said, no, we're not gonna do that anyways, we'll let it go into free cash, and then we'll use it for capital items if it becomes available.
Like what?
Uh, not exactly.
Uh-oh.
Anyway.
All right, okay. I think we were, Rich, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I had, I had some questions on the capital items, um... Talking about the school district, um, as everybody knows, and they should know, that any capital projects for Assawamsted are the responsibility of the town of Lakeville, not the, not the regional school district, so anything above $10,000, I believe it is, that we have to, we have to pay for that.
Can I ask historically why that is? Why, that, that wasn't negotiated part of the regionalization agreement?
When they regionalized K through 12, that was part of the agreement.
There's something that, I'm just curious, we negotiated in the future?
You can try. Shouldn't have been in there in the first place, but it was.
They have one of their own as well, right?
Yeah, yeah, Freetown, Freetown has its, takes care of its own elementary school also.
So, does Lakeville send students out? Freetown?
Not to Freetown Elementary, no.
Uh, there is some kids on the preschool program.
Oh, in the preschool program, yeah, but not, um, K through three, all right? K through three.
So I was, I went to the regional school, um, finance committee meeting, as Leah did the other night, Thursday night, I was a little confused about the $200,000 they wanna spend for feasibility study and whatever, I didn't understand all of that, and I didn't wasn't gonna ask the question.
So I, I did ask, as you recall?
Yeah.
And, and they told us that it's coming from one of their stabilization accounts.
No, I understand that, but why are we doing it?
Well, that's another question.
Oh, I'd like to know why, why they wanna do it? Because if they're doing a feasibility study for an addition to a new building, they're wasting their time.
It wasn't an addition, it was assessed, it was like, it was like a facilities assessment.
No, they mentioned, um, student...
They labeled it as like a campus master plan.
Yeah, like a master, there was a master, yeah.
It seemed like a, a, they wanted to go up to figure out what to do.
I don't know what to do.
Which I know is as blurry as can be, but...
Well, anyways, $200,000 also, I think we oughta find out what that is. Do you understand that, Nate?
Um, I don't understand it, I, I myself am concerned, because Freetown also has a train station, so they also have, um, MBTA communities, and I do know that I spoke with, uh, the superintendent who's concerned that if we have so much MBTA communities, we may need a school, but that's not, that's not an answer to this question, that I can say that's the answer. I do know he's concerned, for sure, about the growth, what we expect to be exponential growth, so, yeah, but...
Well, our population is actually going down.
Well, not if we have...
Right now, it's gone down, gone down by a couple hundred students over there.
But, not if we have 750 units of housing in Freetown and 715 in Lakeville.
Well, that's a different story, but, you know, I, I don't understand why you would do something like that right now.
Right, right, and, and it was, it was a little, it was a little unclear, I certainly, you know, couldn't answer that question, what that campus master plan is about.
So, in the, um, in the capital plan, there's, I know that we, uh, had gone out for a ADA, uh, grant to, uh, fix the sidewalks over at Assawamsted School, that was a substantial amount of money, we didn't get the grant, but, um, don't you think there should be something put in our budget to know that it's at least a quarter of a million dollars?
Um, our intention is to continue applying for the, for the grant.
But the capital plan is supposed to be designed in such a way that you put it in there, and then you figure out how it gets paid for, either taxation, or grants, or whatever, and we, we would be responsible for it, right?
Um, yes, just as we would be any project at the schools.
Bobby?
Just as we would be at any, at a project at the school, so it really ought to be in the school's capital plan if it's gonna be in there.
Not if we're responsible for it.
Well, there are a number, that, that would imply that anything in Assawamsted Elementary School shouldn't be in the school's capital plan, it should be in, in our capital plan instead, doesn't make much sense to me either. Schools have a capital plan where they identify needs and, and, and issues, and, and they put it forward, and it's considered through, and it's a process, and they assess us or not, but, but I, I, I don't know why it would be, you wanna put that one thing in particular in the town capital plan when those other projects are in there, yes, in the school capital plan, but I, I, it's fine.
Well, I mean, they got a $200,000 generator in the capital plan, and we need $300,000 for new boilers.
Right, they've got the playground.
We got the playground too, which is another issue.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we, we, if we do our due diligence on our capital, own capital plan, and all of a sudden, oh Jesus, they give over a million dollars, you know, worth of, uh, capital projects, and we're not prepared, I, I think you need to be prepared. That's just me, I mean, you guys can do what you want, but...
Who's, who's playing with the windows and doors in now?
Who's playing with that?
The, who, which plan have the Assawamsted doors and windows?
In the schools.
Well, it's not our budget, it's not our budget now.
Well, funny if I said, but it's, it's, it's in the school's capital plan.
Right, so it wouldn't just fall the same pattern?
I think that's what Ari's saying.
I don't care, but it's capital plan items that we're gonna have to pay for, and a lot of, we don't know, and a lot in our plan, because when Todd does all his, you know, spreadsheets and all that stuff, none of it's in it.
Do we know if they've captured that need in their plan, even though the grant didn't go through?
I'm sorry, Brian.
Do we know if they've captured that project in their capital plan at this point?
Um, they have the generator in there, um, they don't have the new boilers, and I don't know why, because we talked about that last year.
They do, they've got, they've got boilers on in twenty, year three.
You sure that's, uh, Freetown Elementary?
Assawamsted Elementary.
Okay.
$320,964.
All right.
And they've got replacement of all asphalt and sidewalks in, uh, twenty, in year three as well.
I'm sorry.
Their number's, their number's only $68,000, but they've got replacement of asphalt and sidewalks in their, um, for Assawamsted in year three, under CIP.
But that's not gonna do the project?
Oh, it's, it's gonna, it's, it would, um, it wouldn't replace it, it'd probably be enough to do, to, to crack, to crack repairs and things like that, so, but it is identified in there.
Okay.
Is that perhaps what they thought they would have to pay after the grant?
They, they didn't apply for the grant, how are you applying for a grant?
We applied for the grant.
Um, next, next question I have in the, uh, capital plan is the, uh, the $1 million borrowing for the design and construction of the fire station? I thought what we were going to do next is with the $200,000 plus, that we have to hire a project manager and architect to come up with the preliminary design to go and go to town meeting and then do an override?
Yeah, it's still a plan.
Okay, so this million dollars is for...
Design, full design, schematic design, we don't have any schematic design, which is going to, which, which town meeting approves in the fall, the, uh, committee will assemble as the placeholder for the fall town meeting next year, or this year, um, if we can get there, I think it's probably, we'll, we'll see, but, but the, um, but we wanted to identify the need, um, and this is, this really goes with the 15 million and 25, together, they'd be on probably the same authorization.
Okay, so the override would be first before you spend this million?
Absolutely.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Absolutely.
I'm sure I understand that. Um, the, uh, Peach Barn, um, which is the Betty's Neck, um, we talked about that for a couple of years, you got $75,000 for monetization, stabilization, uh, what about the roadwork and stuff?
Um, well, the, the approach road, we don't have an answer on that at this point.
Bobby?
We don't really have an answer on the road approaching the, uh, because of the bogs, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of discussion back and forth about, Leah, you might wanna, we're waiting on this, there's a lot of discussion back and forth about what, about what can be done, what can, what, what is acceptable from a preparation standpoint and so on, so...
Yeah, and, um, town planner thinks we can get a lot of money from grants anyways to do, um, some of the Peach Barn work, so, I was actually surprised to see any of it in there, because I thought most of it was, we were gonna try to do through grants, but...
We're gonna try, but I thought it'd be helpful to have a number in there for the fall, which will be available if we need to do a match, or if not, you know, I, I asked the facilities staff to come up with sort of a basic cost of, of renovating that spa, the barn itself...
Yep.
To a place where it's usable.
Yep.
It's, uh, it's not only that, it's the road going up to the barn itself is in terrible condition, it's, it's not safe, and, uh, it's not handicapped for another reason, so...
Sure, we have the cap on 16th, right? So, plenty of time to talk about it.
Yep.
So, I mean, the, the road going up there is, uh, was owned by Deacon's Cranberries, they have now sold the cranberry bogs, and the town is not responsible for that road, but I do think that, uh, it'll be discussed with some plan as to what, you know, what should be done, because when the fire department was down there with an ambulance, it's, it's terrible, they shouldn't be driving down there at all, and so, that's a good start. But anyways, okay.
I mean, it's unfortunate, because the other road, which is the one that is blocked off, is the better road to use than the main road to get in, so...
This would be enough to replace the gate, things like that, well, better, accessible, easier.
Yeah.
Which, what's the alternate road in our system?
Um, instead of going straight, instead of driving and going straight up the road to get to Betty's Neck, taking the right, you go down and around the building, and then there's, um, yeah, it's actually a much easier road, quicker, shorter, yeah.
Is that, does it seem hard for you at this point?
Um, well, there's a gate on it, so, it's locked, so, and there's no real parking over there, you just kinda end up right on the property, so, um, whereas there's like the little parking lot.
Yep.
Um, the other thing, looking at the, um, the parks, uh, plan, I'm surprised it's so small, to be honest with you, um, but one of the things that's been talked about for a long time is the parking lot over at the, uh, New Fields, and that's $100,000.
So we're gonna be, hopefully, bringing something forward through ARPA, um, in the next, uh, in the next few weeks or months, the, the park's tuition is in the process of mailing that down.
Okay, but it should still be in the capital plan?
Um, only if you want ARPA voted at town meeting.
No, I mean, we have the Remandation Playground in there last year, and then we decided to fund it with ARPA.
ARPA, so we didn't put it in the capital plan, so the, the, this, my plan's always been, we've been bringing it forward as an, as an ARPA project, you know, so we've been having it in the capital plan.
Once again, the capital plan is funded by taxation, grants, or whatever, so that's what the purpose of the plan is, to have everything in the plan, so we know what the plan is and what it's about.
The only thing about that isn't, ARPA's supposed to be for projects that were never discussed before, they're supposed to be like new.
Yeah, the kinds from DOR is that, if you have it, and the CIP has it coming.
Uh, the, uh, the last thing is that, um, we, uh, in your, your, uh, your, uh, report, you talked about Old Colony, you know, we need to have $150,000 in there for the, uh, for the plan, for the, uh, feasibility study or whatever, and then we also need to put in there, because we haven't had, we hadn't had a school project in 20 years, is to put $20, $25 million on the capital plan for that project.
That'd be, well, first of all, we have no idea what the capital project's gonna cost right now.
Right.
And, and, and second of all, the, um, there will be an, an article coming for spring town meeting, right, Todd?
Yeah, so the article will be for each of the member towns to consider authorizing, uh, the project to move forward to feasibility, and then will be assessed through a debt or capital assessment, our share over a, a period of a few years, the first assessment likely being FY '25, so we're, we're not under the impression there's any cost in FY '24. They would commence the study, do a temporary borrowing, and then the member communities would be assessed the following year, some portion through the, the normal assessment process.
Okay, but according to the plan, and I did look at the website, who's out there? You're out there? You two are out there, right? I looked at the website, and according to the website, it says that the project could be approved on July 1st, 2024.
The whole project?
Mm-hmm, that's the...
They've got, you know, they've got...
That's, you're misworded.
Oh, no, I believe you, I'm just saying that's...
That's what it says.
It probably says that, but...
It's not possible, the feasibility study, then, could've...
I'm just telling you what it says, I mean, I could show it to you if you want, but that's what it says.
Yeah, no, um, so, I, I attended a meeting just because they, last minute, said we want a select board member. Um, so, I, I attended a meeting just because they last minute said we want a select board member. Um, and first of all, I commend Ari because I say this with, you know, all due respect, without, you know, trying to sound any funny or anything. You're the smartest guy in the room. Sorry, Ari, I know you don't like that, but, um, so when we started talking about it, um, there were, you know, several folks who say, you know, well, we, we should have all known that these expenses were coming up, um, like the Carver folks paid 30%, we paid 27%, so that's what we would have to pay of $500,000. And Ari suggested that if we delay it out a little bit, that maybe MSBA will cover some of the costs, so.
If it gets approved.
If it gets approved, so everyone really liked what Ari's idea was and, and, you know, so did I. Um, and I thought it was, uh, you know, a really good idea and so did a few other people and, um, but nowhere did they say that they're looking for approval on July.
They were saying like, but around '26 or so, I didn't know.
Right.
Because their, because their plan had the first two years, '25 and '26, and then by, and then by '20, by sometime in FY '26, maybe '27, we know whether the project's being approved and then whether, and then whether it's being a roll cost.
Yeah, and I mean, it's a big project, we're talking about a hundred million dollar, potentially a hundred million dollar project.
People on that.
I mean, it's not just a school, it's a vocational school, so, you know, that's very, that's quite the specialty, but the feasibility study is supposed to tell us whether, you know, they need to build a new school or just, you know, um, renovate the existing and add an addition. Um, so we really stress that we'd really like them to, you know, just make sure they vet both ideas. Um, Ari also let folks know, I think a few people didn't know that the MSBA doesn't cover demolition, so we would have been on the hook to pay for demolition, so, um, you know, this is what, your fourth or fifth project working with the MSBA, so.
Can't count.
Yeah, so, um, I feel like he's representing us really well with the whole Old Colony. And it was an odd meeting with not much, you know, um, notice, so I don't know if we want to have a conversation that as, who goes as a selectman or because you guys are officially on the committee with Ari.
I'm not on the committee.
No. Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think one of the options, I don't, Ari floated or somebody else did, was the first two or three fiscal years, Lakeville's portion of the feasibility was minimal, like $5,000, and then FY '28 would be the first, I'll call it real payment.
Yep.
It was pretty small.
It was all designed, it actually ends up costing us about $5,000 more over the course of that note because, but, but, um, because we're deferring, pushing off the interest, the principal, I mean, but the, um, but what the advantage is is that if we just paying to a nominal amount, that, that, that balance that will be available, so the corpus will be available to roll into a project, if a project is put away as BA and thereby would be reimbursed by, you know, 40, 50%, whatever it's gonna be, 50%, so, you know, just.
So, we wouldn't even have to pay the whole.
Right.
The interest upfront is like.
It's really in, in our interest to kind of push it off.
Yeah, yeah, and a couple of the other towns were like, well, you know, we all knew this was coming, you know, like we've been saying, so why shouldn't we just pay the, you know, because Carver's 30%.
One town wanted to pay with free cash.
Right, one town, yeah, wanted to pay with free cash.
That was a terrible idea.
Yeah.
But I think like what was said in the room, everybody that knew it was coming are the ones that are close to the subject at hand.
Right.
Doesn't mean all the residents know that this is a potential project.
Right, exactly, yep, yep. And I mean, I, I, I feel like we have an absolute responsibility to our students, you know, and we all know how hard it is to find a subcontractor. We do have to make this happen for them, but, you know, um, it's a lot of money, it's a lot of money, so. Okay, all right.
Any questions, Lorraine, Finance Committee, anybody?
I just had, I mean, the capital, I think, Rich, you touched upon a couple of the things that I had, um, was gonna say, but you know that a lot of the decisions in, in preparing the budget for the next fiscal year comes out of town meeting from the previous time, but I've just, you know, looking at the budget book for the first time, I noticed that you hadn't in the select board prepared for or planned for additional members in this, is that something that we're gonna be talking about next?
That one comes, uh, pretty late in the fiscal year. Um, that would, you know, it, that would be in, I guess, April of, near the end of FY '24.
Right, I'm just saying that.
So, I would say, I would say, you know, our feeling was it'd be a nominal number, they'll just be able, they'll be able to, you know, reserve whatever for, for '24, and then '25 we'll have to, you know, budget that cost. Um, we, you know, made no assumptions or, or combinations or assessments of very staffing, anything like that, we'd wager a bit for that. Um, but there will be the stipend, of course.
Right, understood, no, it just, I was just, it hadn't been mentioned in here, again, I haven't gone through the whole.
I'm sure this will be a discussion after April, but it really would be in the board's interest to have a sort of strategic discussion about how to pave the road going forward and, and we're thinking about, you know, how, how we wanna, you know, sit up for the five million board and so on, but that's, that's, that's a discussion for another time.
Yeah, you know, that's definitely a conversation for after April, I think. Um, any other thing else?
I got one more, one more thing, I'm sorry.
Yep.
The, uh, the capital plan, um, I know the town meeting voted down the $200,000 to do the design for the, uh, town hall, okay? Um, that doesn't mean it's going away.
No.
You know, we gotta do something, so something should be put into the capital plan.
Something we'll need to revisit in the future.
I mean?
Something we'll need to revisit in the future.
Okay. It's a problem, you know.
Anyone else, Finance Committee?
I have a couple small ones in the room.
Okay, so, um, I think most of you have participated in the budget meetings, right?
I have a handful, that's okay.
Yeah, um, so I just want to mention that if you have really specific questions, each, whoever hasn't, each department head will be here, so if you really, you know, but I, you know, I, 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 in the budget process, I always feel like it's, you know, uh, we do these department heads, they're pretty great people, solid, so if you really have like a burning question, like especially on the big departments, uh, fire, police, DPW, and it's an overtime question, I'd reach out to Ari, you know, ahead of time, that way, you know. Um, so, go ahead, Brian.
Um, thanks, mostly they're pretty simple, I think. I think on the capital, I was talking to Chief O'Brien the other day, he actually indicated the ladder truck is gonna be here in like half the time we thought, is that why it's, is this pulled forward about a year?
No, it was all this '24, it's the first payment, oh, Brian Todd, you explained it the other day.
Yeah, I'll take it, don't mind, so, um, the, the town placed the order for the ladder truck in June of '22.
Okay.
And the lease agreement allowed us a 24-month period for it to be built. And our first payment is due June of '24, at the end of FY '24.
So, it wasn't, we didn't expect it. To show up in two years, it was they had up to two years to deliver and then we start to.
Right, right, we, we initially, if you look at the plan from a year ago, we had the first payment at the beginning of '25.
That's what I thought it was.
But it turned out that, um, the cost of the ladder truck was going up at such a rate each, um, a couple of months that, um, we, we did that to, that, that $1.4 million truck, I think now is like $1.6 or $7. So, um, we, we advanced the order, um, had the advice of the supplier and so forth. So, yeah, that actually pushed the first payment.
A little, a little.
Out of '25 and just into, again, to '24.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, library group, can someone remind me what year the library opened?
2003, '04?
I think it's 25 years old, right.
It's already failed, a modern roof?
I, I think it can go longer than that, but that's.
There was a treatment done to it apparently, and, and we get the capital, Nate will be able to talk about this, I'm sure of it.
Okay.
When the, um, when, my understanding is there's a treatment done at some point 10, 15 years ago with a power wash the roof to get, to remove some something or other, and then turn damage to the roof.
Power washed an asphalt roof?
Yeah.
Is it asphalt or is it rubber?
I think it's asphalt.
It's asphalt roof, so they probably.
Does that ruin the warranty too?
Take the Lincoln off it?
Probably, yeah, probably, yeah, so it did, the roof was basically stripped.
What year was it built, I'm sorry?
I, I thought that the library was built, Rich is older, but I thought the library was built in the early 2000s, am I wrong about that, Rich?
That's right.
Oh, there should be 30 years.
They're asphalt, well, they should be composite, they're not asphalt. The roof is a 30-year roof, I can tell you that. Yeah, it should be 30, they should be 30-year composite, they're not asphalt.
I mean, we'll be able to talk about that, but it got, there was some point in the past, previous to all of us, where it got damaged.
There was only one section of the roof, though, Ari, it wasn't the whole roof.
Okay.
That was, that was damaged?
It's not seriously damaged, but, you know, it could compromise the roof.
Okay. Um, with all the building permits going down, it's a minuscule amount, I'm just curious, the permits go up like 30,000 expected from last year? How is that going up if we're expecting new growth to go significantly down?
Um, do you have the actual?
So, the last actual is 22, it's $699. Where are we at for 20, if we don't know today, we can do it next month at the other meetings.
We will, we can get back to you with that.
Um, actually, I can tell you, because I have the report here, and, um, we budgeted 45 in the taxes. I think we got 145 in, Brian, and we budgeted 245, 295, 295, and that's.
Just from building.
And that's through, uh, January, so.
Okay.
That's at least half the way we were.
The way we were.
Last year.
Okay, yeah, because this is like 525 for one big month of all.
Yeah.
I'm just curious if there was like one area we expected growth over last year. Last question was related to, there's a small subsidy for the parks, how's the Loon Pond Lodge arrangement going, is that, that money goes back in general?
The subsidy was resulted in the decision made last year to, um, subsidize the parks in exchange for, um, closing Clear Pond Park to outside residents, non, non-residents.
So, how much would we say the agreement of the Loon Pond Lodge is or isn't fully funding the parks? How much is it bringing in?
I, I can raise more detail, but it's, it's doing very well. You know, we can get back to you with that.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, Brian.
Actually, I have a question, then back to the, the parks.
I think Brian got that report.
Yep, the funding that we did was for Clear, because of Clear Pond being resident-only. It was, from the way I understood it, it was kind of, let's try this, how did it work? I don't, it was, did it work out well, was it busy last year, could we made money by letting other people come in, what happened?
It was terrific.
It wasn't a moneymaker, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't intended to be a moneymaker.
I've, I've never been, so I can't, you know.
Our family bought a season pass and it was amazingly peaceful.
Peaceful?
Yes. Take it for what you want that to be, but as far as enjoying the facility, it was amazing.
And we're actually way ahead.
All right, so it was worth, it was worth the venture?
Yeah, key piece of up, season pass fees were way up. And, uh, so we, I exceeded what the cost to run the facility was.
Can we maybe get that information from Parks or?
Oh, we have it, we already know that.
Yeah. But just the specifics on that whole decision?
Yeah.
I've never used the park, I agreed that it was probably a good idea to let the residents be, have sole access to it, and, uh, I was just curious how it worked out, so. Thank you for letting me know.
Thank you, Brian, I can only give you our experience.
It's all right.
Because it's pleasant.
You can speak for the populace.
Very careful with that.
All right, any other questions? Yes, no? Okay, so, thank you, we'll move along to, uh, budget meetings, uh, first one is?
March 6th.
March 6th. All right. All right, um, so, next on the agenda, we do have the, um, Senior Center addition feasibility, scope of work and appointing feasibility study committee members. It's a mouthful.
Mattel by chair, we'd love to stay, but do you require us?
No, we don't require you, but.
Thank you, Brian.
Uh, would anybody like to make a motion to close Thin Company, you think?
I shall make that motion.
All right, Constance.
Aye.
Blanca.
Aye.
Finch.
Aye.
Carota.
Aye.
Hey, I'm meeting is closed at 7:45.
Hey, all right, thank you, guys, we'll see you on the 6th.
Put bells on.
Yeah. Um. All right, so, I do see Lori Fahey here, even without my glasses. There we go. Would you like to come and join us? All right, so, um, so, we had talked about, um, we've been talking about for a while now, putting, um, doing a feasibility study for putting in addition um, onto the Senior Center, which I do think, uh, is definitely needed. We have $40,000 in the FY '23 capital budget for this. I know that at one of the meetings, we determined the makeup of the feasibility study committee would be the Senior Center Director, Inspeccional Services Director, Facilities Manager, Finance Committee Representative, one select board member, Town Administrator, and Accounting Council on Aging Representative.
December 19th meeting.
December 19th, um, so I guess we will go ahead and appoint those members, um, first, uh, because we have to do that anyways, so I will entertain a motion that we appoint Lori Fahey, uh, Director, Nathan Darling, uh, Inspeccional Services, Paul Lee, Facilities Manager, Leah Fabian, Select Board Manager, Ari Sky, Town Administrator, and David Lee Boyarjen, Council on Aging Representative.
Katie DeRozier from Finance.
Oh, and Katie DeRozier from the Finance Committee. With terms to expire July 31st, 2023. Yes, yep, okay.
Second?
Any discussion on those, the only thing I'll say is, um, we had decided at that meeting to the three of us decided to appoint me, so that's where I came from on that. Um, anything else on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, so Ari, if you want to just, um, explain where we're at?
At that December 19th meeting, I was directed by the, uh, the Board Assembly, as a, as a, as a, put together a, um, a scope of work, a blanket to the board for review, uh, we worked with our, their on-call OPM, put together a, uh, a scope of work, it was very similar to what we did for the town hall fire station study, uh, last, uh, in 20, late '21, and, um, we used our, our on-call OPM, RTA, uh, you should have, you have met, uh, George Figurito in some form, and, uh, he put together the attached, um, uh, feasibility, um, scope of work. Uh, there's been a work done on this at this point, this is just parameters, and the idea would be that if the board approves the scope of work, we'll convene the, uh, committee and, um, start to move the project forward.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on this?
How did you?
Yep.
How did we decide it was gonna be RTA?
Um, they are one of our on-call OPMs, it was my decision.
We didn't follow that process with the fire station?
We did, we put out an RP for the OPMs, um, they, we had several who applied.
I can't, I'm sorry, can you put your hands up?
We put out an RP for the OPMs.
Yeah.
We, um, had several who applied.
Correct.
Um, we signed them on, and the master services agreements. We just say, with, um, with RTA, we've done it under, um, not 30B, but under chapter, um, seven, right?
Seven.
Chapter seven, um, brought them on through, uh, the master services agreement. Um, there's been no expense with them at this point on this project, um, they, they just, they just put, they just put together this proposal for us. It's up to the board to decide whether to go forward with it or not, just like they did with the, um, fire station and with the, uh, and with the, um, ARPA water study and with the PPW study.
Yeah, but if you remember that RFP that went out, we had, uh, ten people that responded to that RFP. And we chose three companies to represent, you know, the town. One was, um, Pomeroy, one was Environmental Partners, and the other one was...
Circle Tech.
Circle Tech, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But there was, there was seven or eight others that were interviewed during that whole process, right?
Oh, it was seven, I don't remember how many applied.
Okay, whatever, seven or eight. So we did go through a process to narrow it down. We, we haven't talked about anybody having to do with doing this feasibility study for the, uh, for the senior center.
Don't we have a procurement policy?
Yep.
That says purchases between ten thousand and fifty, and this is forty thousand, right?
This is forty.
Yeah.
But in, but in general, it says that, that, uh, that, that, you know, that I, as the CPO for the town, responsible for the procurement of all supplies, equipment, and services. So I went, so I, in my understanding, I was directed to get a scope of work put together. I went to this, organize this company who I've worked with in the past, and asked them to put together this scope of work for us. We have them under an MSA right now, they're doing, RTA is also doing the work on the, um, um, on the stage cover, working on the ramp, uh, for the, uh, for the sort of library. Um, so we, they've been very, very, uh, effective for us.
I think two things. First of all, there's no information here on this proposal about the qualifications at all. No information about references and other projects that they have done, especially senior center projects. And the other problem I have is that I think that the feasibility study ought to be involved in the discussion of the scope of the work and who's decided to do the work. And I think we should get multiple proposals from different people. The, uh, the, uh, town office building and the fire station cost seventy, seventy thousand dollars to do all that work. This is, uh, thirty-seven thousand dollars to put on a, a small addition, you know, onto the COA. It seems expensive to me. That's just my opinion. I, I don't think that...
Well, forty thousand's what town meeting approved for the, for that, for that study.
Right.
Obviously, it's less than that, and, um, you know, frankly, I'm not sure how to respond to that. I was asked to get this moving. I did what I did, I did what I have the authority to do to get it moving. Um, I'm not, I think if I hadn't gotten it moving, I'd be asked why it's not, I'm not moving, so I'm not sure what to say.
But you never discussed the process with the board at all, okay? And...
And that's really not true, Rich, I'm sorry.
Well, you didn't, you didn't discuss...
You could have been at the meeting on some...
Of choosing the, the company that we're going to use.
But, I, I mean, I...
I can read the minutes, if you like.
I, I, Ari and I had a conversation about this, and I said to Ari that I think that we've done everything that we asked him to do and by what he has the authority to do. So if that's what this specific conversation is about, I mean, I don't think this is, I don't think the work that, that we've done thus far is out of order at all. I think this is what we asked Ari to do. I mean, we can all look at the minutes.
We're not talking about the minutes, yeah. We're talking about the process of deciding who we're going to choose to do this project. And I think just to bring this one company forward without any information about the company and the references having to do with this company, I don't think is right.
But we've already assigned them other projects.
No, this is completely different.
Right, but then we've already...
This is not the same. This is not the same.
The board will prefer we'll put out an RFP, and we'll come back to this in a couple of months when we have, when we have some...
I mean, that's, that's ridiculous. It won't take a couple of months to do that, because it's under a certain dollar amount. You know, you don't have to do that. But, I mean, does this company have experience with, with, um, with senior centers?
Yes.
Do they have company, do they have experience putting programs together for the senior centers?
Uh, they've, they've, they've learned, they have a great deal of experience when it comes to, um, developing, uh, program, program assessments for different...
Talking about senior centers?
Yeah, I believe they do, yes.
Oh, I'd like to know. Would you like to know?
I feel like I have to just chime in. Having, you know, an onsite or, um, an OPM available to us, this is a new concept for me, and I think it's a new concept for all of us. It is. So utilizing, you know, that OPM for, you know, like, the large building projects, again, this is new to me, we've always just gone out, you know, to bid. So I'm still trying to wrap my head around, um, you know, the process that we've gone through in the past to a, a new process, having an OPM on, not the payroll, but on, what did you call it? You said on...
On-call.
On-call. So this is all new to me, so I'm still trying to wrap my head around all of this, too. So I, I have no issues going out for bid, and we hope that they would certainly, um, you know, submit a proposal.
We already have them under an MSA. Very high under a master services agreement, which is committable under chapter seven. It's really not that unusual to, to go to your on-call OPM to other projects. But if the board wants to perform a procurement on this thing, that's what we'll do. And we'll slow down the process, but I was told expedite, but I was...
I don't want to...
It's a building project, this is not putting together a spec for a mini cap.
It's a feasibility study, it's not a building project yet, it's a feasibility study.
Okay, all right, all right. Todd, do you feel as though everything we've done is actually legal by the law? In picking the OPM?
Oh, sure.
Okay. I don't know why we would go out and do another RFP at this point. I mean, we know this person, they had to submit all that stuff when they submitted the original, right?
Mm-hmm.
We had the original references, we had their original when they submitted from the first RFP a few months ago.
What RFP?
It was an RFP there. We, we signed a contract with them, I've worked with them in the past, it's been work for us on these other projects.
Okay, so we already had some references and everything?
Yep.
I, I mean, I don't know why this is such a, you know, it's not a brand-new building, and there's certain things that anyone that knows the building, including, I've had conversations with Nate, the building was originally created in this particular fashion, so there could be an addition put on. It's not like we're recreating something from scratch here. I, I don't know why we're gonna, you know, go through this whole process when, Rich, what you wanted was an update every single meeting on exactly, you know, where it was, stressing it wasn't moving fast enough, so we moved it along, and now you're not happy because we moved it along.
No. What I wasn't happy about was the committee hadn't been appointed yet. It was back in December that I brought it up, two or three times, that the committee hadn't been appointed so they could start their work. And in my opinion, this is my personal opinion, is that the, the feasibility study committee ought to be part of this process just like we did with the fire department and the town hall project, just like we did with the police station project, just like we did with the library process, project. I just don't, I, I don't know how...
No, but all those, all those...
Hundred percent in favor of this project.
Right, but all those buildings, and you folks who built this building back in the day did a great job, and you left behind some pretty, you know, specific things, like the bathroom placement and everything else. This is like, if someone comes in and they think they're going to redesign something that... It's like designing one-on-one to match the existing, and everything was put in place so that the addition would work. It's not brain surgery on this one. I, it's not a brand-new design from the get-go. I just don't understand why we can't... We have to act like it's a, we, don't we have enough work going on? I mean...
I haven't seen any references or any qualifications. This is what I get here to sign. I don't think, and this is me, I won't sign it the way it is, okay? Because I think it's important to understand and to check references to make sure that if this particular architectural firm, and it's not even a project management firm, has the experience, and that's just me. I'm sorry. I have no problem with the project. I've been supporting this project and pushing this project forward for months.
Do we have this information on RTA?
Hmm.
All right, so, um, we have a meeting on the thirteenth? Can we get that information and then revisit this discussion on the...
Twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth, the right?
Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eighth.
And in the meantime, then, nothing's going to be getting done, so...
I, I was working from the same, honestly, in my mind, I was working from the same format that we worked with, um, with the last, um, time we did this, that's OPM. Um, the, the board did not approve the contract for Silver Tech, I approved the contract for Silver Tech. The, uh, the board approved the scope of work, and scope, and then the project went forward. And the scope of work was approved before, was not, was approved, was approved outside of the building committee, so the building committee would have someone available to help them, to help navigate them through. And my thinking was that we'd do the same thing here, we hired an OPM to do that. The board prefers a formal procurement, and that's what we'll do.
I...
I, I was working under the assumption that, uh, where they're saying that I was to get this going, so...
Did, who did the scope of work before it went out to bid, though? Was that was us? For the, the town hall fire station?
Town fire station, Circle Tech did the scope of work.
Okay, so they put together the scope of work after they want, we want to...
After they were hired, after they were hired, it's, it's one of the on-calls.
Okay.
So I really view it as analogous, but that's fine, we can...
Like I said, this, having a, an OPM on-call is just, it's just a new concept for me, so...
Right, why can't we go with a new concept? I mean, I don't know.
I'm not saying that we're not, can't go with the new concept, but I would like to see, um...
I mean, honestly, I've been, I've been, um... I've been under the direction of the board to get facilities projects moving, is what I'm trying to do. Um, if, you know, and we're doing, I'm doing that by bringing on a suite of, of on-call OPMs to help us with the higher-level stuff and get stuff going. Um, RTA is doing the work on the, um, stage cover, they did that, they, there's been documents which are going out now, they did that. Um, they're doing the work on the ramp. I'm, I'm not saying this is, this is, I'm not saying this is the same as, you know, this project, but I am saying that we use them for these projects. If the board wants to take them off a formal approach with, with the seniors, with senior center, then we'll do that. And we'll go out to bid and, and do that.
I don't know that that's necessarily what we're looking for. I think that, um, I would like to know a little bit more about the background of this company. And reference, I mean, we, I don't, I'm not necessarily saying we have to go out to bid.
I can get you out this week, that's no problem at all.
All right, and then, um...
So, so we're gonna, and, and, you know, I, I get it, Lorraine, I do, that we're, we're, and, and you know what? We're trying to move things in a different direction. I, I mean, we know that a lot of practices we do as a select board are more traditional than actually policymaking, you know, it's just tradition. And I don't see why it's such a bad idea to let the town administrator do his job.
I'm not saying that it was a bad idea, your words, but I'm just saying that for clarification, for, I mean, a senior center and fire station, town hall are a little bit bigger projects than, um, you know, an outdoor, you know, roof and our...
That's true.
So that's, you know, I'm not, I'm not mixing this, I'm just saying that I would like, I think that getting to know these people a little bit better would be nice to know a little bit more about what they've done in the background.
Can I suggest that, um, for tables for now, I will, um, bring the, the reference information, the bio-information and all stuff, or George will be his friend to you. Um, I invited him to come to this meeting, he was unable to make it because he's out of town. Um, so I will, make sure he's out the next, I'll make sure that whichever one we bring this to, he'll be available.
Let's try to bring it to the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
In the meantime, Madam Chair, I'd like to see the feasibility study, uh, committee meet, uh, to talk about this and talk about the scope, so they're aware of what's going on.
Well, and, and you know, I mean, even that, Rich, okay? This is, you know, Lori, staff member, Nate, staff member, Paul Nie, facilities director now, staff member, Ari, staff member. There's only me and Devaney who aren't staff. They, they work on, they're working on this, you know, they can talk to each other, they can... It's not like we have at-large candidates like we do on the police station. I mean, this isn't a new build. I guess that's my, my big thing here, is we're not going to have someone design a completely different look for...
My point is, the feasibility study has not met to talk about the project and what needs to be done for this project. And I think that's important. We appointed them just about ten minutes ago, right?
Right.
They haven't met and discussed it.
Right, but...
And it's the whole purpose of this, the whole purpose of the OPM's job.
Right.
Just, just as it was the purpose of the OPM that we use for the, for the town hall fire station project, to help walk through.
Right, and again, I don't think this is that complicated. What do we need? We need extra space. All right, I'm, I'll guess, we need a couple of boxes. I'd like to see the veteran's agent move from where he is to a, maybe some more, you know, you're not going to build a new kitchen, because the kitchen was built there, so it would be in the middle. I mean, that's what I'm saying, this is so, everyone's way over-complicating this, but we'll revisit it on the twenty-eighth. I really think that the staff is really able to handle, uh, even if I and Devaney and now Katie can't be, um, the staff's going to keep this going, it's not really guesswork. Anyways...
Well, if, if we are to have the, this committee meet before, then twentieth isn't going to work.
Right.
Because of out-town schedules and things like that.
Yep.
So it's really...
So we'll have to revisit it in March, first meeting of March.
All right.
Why we can't we talk about it on the twenty-eighth?
Because Ari's going to be away, and I have some reasons I can't be at meetings for the next few days.
No, I know, but I thought we were having a meeting on the twenty-eighth.
Right, but we won't be around to have a meeting with the feasibility committee.
Okay.
This is really...
But we'll have the information for this...
It's, it's up to the board, the board needs to decide what to do. If you're going to move...
You know what, you and I will figure it out. You and I will figure it out. We'll, you and I will talk about it tomorrow, and you and I will figure it out. When, I will give you the opportunity to send an email to staff, figure out their availability, and then we can decide.
But you'll just send the information for this for tomorrow?
Oh, yeah, as soon as I have it, as soon as I have it, yeah.
Yeah, no, that'd be great.
Okay. All right, so we did appoint the committee, so we're done with that. Lori, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And staying all night.
Not a problem.
All right, agenda item number six. Uh, so, at town meeting, we, um, approved the, um, acceptance of Ledgewood Drive, so, um, now to the... To that end, I will entertain a motion that pursuant to the vote taken under article twenty-three of the November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two special town meeting to take by eminent domain for public way purposes, a permanent easement in, on, or under the parcel of land shown as Ledgewood fifty-foot width drive on a plan entitled roadway acceptance plan. Ledgewood Estates on Ledgewood Drive in Lakeville, Massachusetts, dated August twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, revised through September seventeenth, twenty-twenty, prepared by Outback Engineering Incorporated, and any access, drainage, utility, and other easements related thereto, and to execute and to authorize the chair to execute on behalf of the select board the order of taking to acquire the foregoing easements and any other documents related thereto, and having determined that no damages are due and all owners affected by the taking have waived all damages, if any be due, hereby award no damages for said taking. Agreed.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, yeah, do we have the, um, signed engineering plans for all these easements from the, uh, engineering company?
Yes, we do.
We do?
I believe so.
Do we, crazy?
We have the signed, um, asphalt plans, the roadway asphalt plans.
Okay, for the easements?
They're on there.
The easements are on there, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next, number seven. Uh, request from the Lakeville Arts Council, um, to use the property, um, for the annual arts and music festival. So it includes the actual dates of the festival, sometime before to set up, and sometime after for, um, cleanup. So I will entertain a motion that we allow the Lakeville Arts Council to use town property. So I will entertain a motion that we allow the Lakeville Arts Council to use town property, uh, let's see, for the festival on September 30th, 2023, and to use the townhouse, the center stage, and Dickrem Dyregrin Square from September 26th through October 9th for setup, uh, the festival and cleanup. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, number eight. We received a notification from Mike Smith that he, I think he was having surgery, and he got a new job, so he wants to stay on the park commission, but he felt as though the, his place on the community preservation committee, he couldn't fulfill, and he didn't want to cause a problem with the quorum, so he submitted a resignation letter that we accepted at the last meeting. And we have now heard from the park commission that they have designated Paula Hool to serve in that capacity. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Park Commissioner Paula Hool to the Community Preservation Committee with her term to expire July 31st, 2023, or upon the end of her current term on the park commission. So moved for discussion? Yep.
Second, same thing.
So Paula is not, has not pulled papers, so I believe that's why it says for the end of her current term. So I'm, I believe the park commission did this because Mike told them that they were having problems getting a quorum, so they wanted to appoint someone. So I, it appears to me that they're, I was surprised, but it appears to me they're going to have to appoint someone else after the election probably, so.
Okay, so this is, do we know how many meetings this is? I mean, is-
Probably one.
Yeah, probably be one. Two.
Two meetings? Two, okay, two.
Two. So, I mean, I was surprised to see because I knew Paula hadn't pulled papers, and, you know, I talked to a couple of people from the parks, and they said that, you know, they just didn't want, because it's so hard, I mean, there's so many people, and it's so hard for you guys to get a meeting night.
I don't think we have to put here upon the end of her current term on the park commission. We just appointed her to July 31st, 2023, and if she's not running, then you appoint somebody else. But, I mean, we don't know, you know, what her current term is, or going to be. So we voted her to be on until July 31st unless she decides to leave the park commission, then we would automatically appoint somebody else.
Right. I mean, technically, if she gets enough write-in candidates, because that's how some people get elected to the parks, I don't know how many people have pulled papers, so then this would make her-
That's a good point.
Right, so-
Advisory when she's still on the-
Yep. Sue Spielner from, uh, Community Preservation Committee. You've come down front.
So we only have two meetings before the election. So, I mean, does it really make sense to appoint anyone until after the elections are done? Because we have had enough time with quorum to begin with. So if we fill that seat, then if we can't make quorum, we won't be able to have our, have the meeting. So to me, it almost makes sense to not fill it till after the elections that way.
The park commissioner already voted on it.
Yeah.
I would say, Madam Chair, I don't think that's discretionary at this point. Park commission designated the person.
Yeah. They, um, yep, so.
I would just leave out that last sentence, but-
Yeah. Do you want to amend? So do you want to amend the motion that way? Because, so let's say someone, let's say she has people hate her in.
Right, that's a good point.
Then she'd be in for another, so we don't want that, right? Because after they change the board in April, then a lot of these committees are redone anyways, so.
Right, but, you know, we just have had such a hard time meeting quorum because everyone has so many other commitments that we only have two meetings. We're trying to get our, our plan done.
Yep.
And if we can't beat quorum for one or two meetings, it just sets us back a little bit of that.
Yeah.
So if we appoint her, then that would just have to make the, the quorum.
Yeah. It'll be just hope we can, right?
Right, yeah.
But, I mean, I know there were a few meetings that some of them have already said they can't go, so if she can't make it to one, then we probably wouldn't have quorum.
Yeah. Um, yeah, you know what? I just don't feel, I think we have to appoint it because the park commission did, so.
From Ellen, and do it, get rid of the, through her appointment, but through July 31st.
Yeah. And if she's not a park commissioner, then she can't represent the park commission anyway, so it goes away. So whoever, someone-
Just was able to make it to those two meetings so that we can-
Yeah. Um, so, do you, you, you made the motion, Lorraine, so do you want to amend?
Yep, I'll amend the motion to exclude or upon the end of her current term on park commission.
Okay, second.
Okay. So let's first, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any other discussion on the amended motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Uh, let's see, we have the minutes from January 23rd. I'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
Any corrections, omissions, additions? Not that I could see. Tracy, I really think you do a good job with the minutes. Thank you. It is a thankless job. All right, all, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, new business? Does anyone have new business?
I don't know whether this is new business or old business.
All right.
Bring it up anyways.
What do we got?
Um, since we just had a big debate about the process to hire a project manager and architect for the COA, I would like our representative of the fire station committee to come back with a process on the 28th to tell us how we're going to go about hiring a project manager, first of all, for the fire station project, and then a process for how we're going to hire an architect.
Okay. I believe those are already, Ari's got his plans, but Ari, do we mind doing that update?
I don't see anything.
We'll bring it, we have any, we've been appointed, everybody's been sworn in, and we were just going to look to schedule our first meeting.
Yep. Okay. All right. Anything else under new business, old business?[1763.04]